On it. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Hafford, and I'm the Chairwoman of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We're here for the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I would like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Arey.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Fodis.
Aye.
Ms. German. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlo. Ms. Panera. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you all. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, the Office of Information Technology, and the Department of Planning. After each presentation, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenter. I want to note that I know that there are members of the community in attendance tonight's meeting, but this meeting is not designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 20th, 2022, which was the opportunity for the board to hear comments from the citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement program. Now, I would like to invite Mr. David Lichens of the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability to begin his presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the Planning Board and Director Lafferty. Thank you very much for inviting me this evening. This is a picture of... Well, I usually have a picture of the bay and some of our tidal waterways, but this is actually a picture looking north from Lock Raven. You can see the golf, I guess that's Pine Ridge Golf Course there. We always have these beautiful vistas looking north in Baltimore County, but that is lovely Baltimore County. So, is it Taylor, I guess, is going to be driving for me this evening?
Yep, that's me.
Thank you. So, this is an organizational chart, didn't come out as big as I was hoping it was. We have about 80 employees in the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability. Again, I am David Lichens, I'm the Director. I've worked for the county for 37 years, and it's been my pleasure to serve. I came the year that our department was formed in 1987. So, I'm starting my 37th year. We have an administration, we have the lower three groups, Stormwater Management, Environmental Impact Review Section, and our Groundwater Management, all are review projects, development-type projects, and they have a lot of state mandated regulations, critical area law, forest conservation regulations, the stormwater regulations. Our capital program is basically the last three sections on the bottom. Our watershed restoration group, our watershed management monitoring group, and our forest management group, all of which do capital, probably $25 to $30 million in capital projects each year for the county. Last year, our forest management group, the county executive, has placed a real emphasis on forestry, and he gave us six new employees in that group to go ahead and not only plant more trees, but to then, he gave us a maintenance section to take care of the trees once we plant them, to make sure they stay alive. We'll talk more about that later, but I just wanted to point out that even though that's operating money, giving us more employees, we use those employees to do, spend the capital money, to take care of the things once we spend it. So, we don't just spend it, we follow up. So, Taylor? Next, please. This is what we usually spend our money on, these are the drivers for our capital program. The county has an MS4 NPDS permit, which is a permit to discharge stormwater into the streams in the state of Maryland, given to us by the EPA and MDE. It's a five-year permit. Our current permit, we got last November, and it runs, or November 21, and it runs through 26. It requires us to restore or address the pollutants that would run off of 3,000 acres of land, of hard surface. So, the pollutants that run off, we have to, in different ways, address. In addition to that, we have to reduce pollutants in the Chesapeake Bay. TMDLs are total maximum daily loads and their individual pollutants. So, in the Chesapeake Bay, we have to reduce nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment. We also have local TMDLs. And some of the local TMDLs, we also have in 26 different waterways. We have to reduce pollutants for these TMDLs. Some of them are addressing nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment pollution, but some of them are things like bacteria. We have a trash TMDL in the Gwens Falls. We also have some legacy pollutants that we have to try to fix that are still in the waterways, like PCBs, or chloridine, or mercury that comes from air pollution. So, we have a variety of things that we're trying to address with our capital program. Next slide, please. The new MS4 permit, the most recent one that we have, has some new things in it. Things like floating wetlands and how to use floating wetlands to address some of those pollutants. We actually have in our capital budget this year a proposal for $500,000 for experimental floating wetlands in some of our stormwater management ponds throughout the county. There's all kinds of things that are addressed forest conservation. Just to show you a list of the different types of things that are new to our permit. Next slide. It's not just the DEP's permit or my department's permit, it's a permit that addresses pollutants from all of the county, and there's other agencies that are involved. This shows you that something Public Works is addressing. Salt is a real problem. Putting salt on the roads that washes into the reservoirs and pollutes the reservoirs. The state and EPA are very concerned about that. So, they want us to address the issue. So, our DPW would be getting new equipment. They need new tracking devices to see how much is being put in each, coming off of each truck. They want us to have a salt academy to train, not only county drivers, but also private people that are driving snowplows. Our DPW is way ahead of this and has already bought a lot of new equipment and is tracking a lot of the things that their individual employees are doing. But this is just to show you, it's the whole county, it's not just us, it's DPW, it's PAI, it's property management, it's the schools, lots of different people, Wreckham Parks. All these agencies give us data that we then report on our pollutant reductions. Next slide, please. So, this is the, some of this may be old news to some of you, and some of the newer people might not know this, but these are the four categories where we spend that $25 to $30 million every year. Doing stream restoration projects throughout the county, doing shoreline stabilization, things we have, for those of you that don't know, we have 200, over 200 miles of shoreline in Baltimore County. So, a lot of it is eroding, and we do vegetative stabilization. We do put in rocks or hard scapeing sometimes to stop erosion. We also go to stormwater management facilities that are throughout the county. Older ones, stormwater management's been around since the 1980s, and in the beginning, it was a pipe in one side and a pipe out the other side, but that doesn't really treat the pollutants very much. So, there's newer ways, we take older stormwater ponds built in the 80s and 90s, and we update them with newer ways to reduce those pollutants and put best management practices in them, and we get much more credit for doing that. And of course, reforestation, we'll talk about that a lot. Lots of different programs, planting trees is, addresses so many different issues, from reducing the pollutants to providing shade, to increasing property values. So, actually, we have some Madam Chairwoman helped us this year, and some of our projects we'll talk about. She wasn't around for the project or for the grand opening, but I thought about photoshopping your face into some of the pictures. But, next slide, please. We'll talk about each one of these individuals. Stream restoration. Again, on the left side, you can see what it looked like. There's a storm drain outfall at the top of the hill that comes down through a stream. On the right, you see what we did. This is in White Marsh. We, these projects take three or four or five years to plan, and we have to accumulate the money over three or four years many times. We have to have the money in place before we can put it out to bid. So, it's a very good example for our capital budget of multi-year projects. It's not just, they give us this money and we spend it this year. We accumulate it over a number of years, and in your five or six years of the capital budget, we have to put stuff in this year that we're not going to spend for four more years. Do the design. You have to then do the plans and get the permitting, and then actually go out and build it, and that whole process might take five years. So, next slide, please. Stream restoration. In this capital budget, we're requesting 13.5 million for, well, for the 24, for nine new projects. Some of those are funding for design, and some of those are funding for the actual construction of these projects. And the map on the right shows you places all over Baltimore County where we've actually already done projects for stream restoration. Some of them are small, but some of them are thousands of feet long. Next slide, please. In our capital improvement project, again, the shoreline stuff. You can see there on, this is, I believe Chesterwood Park. You can see on the left, it was an eroded beach with old pilings, and when the tide goes up, it just washes soil and sediment out into the bay. On the right side, we did this last year. County Executive was actually out helping us plant grass in this. But, it's a beautiful shoreline job. We planted more trees on the right side, but those are bay grasses that as the tide goes up and down, there are different zones with different grasses. It's an excellent way to reduce nitrogen running off the land out into the water. Next slide, please. So, here's areas on our 200 miles of shoreline where we've gone and we've done shoreline jobs, and they last. And some of these are 10 years old, but we do this throughout Baltimore County. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, stormwater management ponds, we have about 5,000, maybe 4,500 stormwater management ponds in Baltimore County. Half are owned by the county, half are privately owned. Of the ones that we own, this is an example of taking an older pond where we just pipe in, pipe out the other side, and we put different techniques in the pond so the water would have to be retained at different levels. We planted vegetation in the pond so that the pollutants can sit there, and the vegetation will take up some of the pollutants. And we hope we can infiltrate a lot of the water into the ground. This one is there from Gwens Falls. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, one year after conversion. So, we do a lot of these. We spent about, I think we spent maybe $60 million so far on this total. Next slide, please. This shows the storm, how many stormwater management facilities that we've worked on throughout the county and all the different places that we go. Next year, we're looking for, our budget's about 4.6 million to go in for 18 projects. For water quality projects and for best management practices, repairs, we also go in and do that. We try to get to every pond, to inspect it every three years, and when we do an inspection, the state requires us to inspect them every three years, both public and private. And during that inspection process, we try to flag which ones we can go in and upgrade. So, we're out there looking all the time. Next slide, please. Trees. We plant tens of thousands of trees. We have lots of different programs, again, the county executive, this is a priority for him. We now have three sections in our forestry group. We have a rural reforestation, where we might plant one or five or 10 acres or 20 acres at a clip. We have an urban reforestation section, which we gave three of our new employees to that, to go and plant street trees. The county cuts down lots of street trees every year, and we're going to go in and replace them. But we have several other programs under the urban reforestation. And this year, the county executive said, look, the street tree program's great, we get a lot of compliments on it. People love to see that it's instant results in your neighborhood. So, could we, over and above everything else that you're doing, could you plant us another 1,000 street trees this year? And we said yes. So, those are different programs we'll talk about in a second. Next slide. First, Operation Retreat. We came up with this several years ago, at the county executive's suggestion. We did an analysis of tree canopy coverage versus income level. It census blocks throughout the county, everywhere in the county. And we picked the 32 with the proportion, the lowest proportion of income and the lowest proportion of tree canopy coverage. And we called it Operation Retreat. So, of those 32 communities, we're going to go to each one of them, and we're going to plant more street trees. We're going to help the people that can least afford to help themselves. We're going in and providing free trees. We have a whole group that did the analysis with all different departments. Actually, Director Lafferty in the Planning Department started this when he was the Chief Sustainability Officer. And when he moved over to planning, we took it over and promoted it. And so, we have 32 different communities that we're going in, and we're planting, we're paying, probably doing three or four of these each spring, and three or four of these each fall. We're spending about $500,000 a year. Originally, when we did this program, we were using capital money, we were spending our own money. We have since gone, last year, and gotten a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust for 1.5 million. And we got the American Rescue Plan money, 1.5 million, which is taken over from the capital funds, but this whole program started with capital funds, so that's why it's in here. Next slide, please. So, this is the Operation Retreat program. This is the first public planting that we did, you can see the county executive there in front, and again, our logo, and we're going around, and we've done about half of these projects, and we have enough money from these private places where we've gotten to go through the end of '24. So, after '24, we may come back and revisit whether or not we need some more capital funds. Next slide, please. So, this is us planting urban trees. We've been running around, the urban group, planting trees for a long time. We used to, when, we also cut down a lot of urban trees. So, you know, if they're tearing up the sidewalk, Public Works has an arborist named Saul Pass who was going around and actually taking out trees for Baltimore County. Well, when we came up with the money from the county executive, we hired Saul Pass and stole him from Public Works, and he now runs our urban tree effort. And as I said, the county executive gave us, it costs about $625 for each tree for us to plant. County Executive gave us $625,000 for another 1,000 trees. He liked it so much, and it's going so well, that we started our program in Towson, and Owens Mills, and Dundalk, Woodlawn, and Parkville, in places where we knew we had cut trees down, we have it all mapped out. And this is the photo, I was going, this is our first, right in Towson, planting trees. It's a little different in Towson because there's, you know, it's businesses, it's not people's front yards. And so, Chairwoman Hafford was instrumental in helping us with the business community in going around and finding places where we could plant and forming the business community, and this was our first effort. Unfortunately, she was out of town, but, you know, we should, I asked them to try to photoshop it in, and they said it would, might be illegal, so I didn't do it. But this was our first planting of 1,000 trees. The county executive liked this program so much, he asked us to put it out in every capital budget, to plant another 1,000 street trees. So, it's not just a one-year, it was supposed to be a one-year-off thing, but now we're going to try to do this extra every year. Next slide, please. So, again, there's the guiding documents, the MS4 permit, the Phase 2 Waterway Improvement Program that the state puts together, or Phase 3, I'm sorry, the TMDL, Local Implementation Plans, and then Swaps for Small Watershed Action Plans that we work with the community to see what upgrades they would like to see, and we plan with them. We've written all of our Small Watershed Action Plans for the whole county. Some of them are 10 years old now. So, we're going to go back and re-engage the communities to see what improvements we could make, and we're going to, we've gotten a consultant to to look at each one of these and go back and revise them. Next slide, please. So, this is the meat and potatoes, I guess, of where we are tonight, showing needs over the next five years, and showing you that we spend, when we total up all of the different types of projects we do, $25 to $30 million each year. It changes. We're putting money in for those out years already, and putting money in and deciding which projects we're hoping to do. And then we always have carryover money from previous years. But this is our basic plan right now for the next five years and projects that we have identified in those four areas that we talked about, just to show you what we're up against. Next slide. This is a matrix we put together to show you. The Planning Office wanted us to show how our efforts were promoting resiliency and sustainability. Across the top are those different types of projects we just talked about, and how each one of those, in some way, everything that we do is really promoting resiliency and sustainability. But just to show you that the nexus between what we do and how it's reducing nuisance flooding or riverine flooding. Sea level rise is a tough one. Different kinds of new and severe weather that we're seeing. You know, the swings from climate change. So, this just shows that all the different things we do have some nexus in promoting sustainable and resiliency, sustainability and resiliency. Next slide. So, this is the last two slides I have here for you, but these are the other types of projects we do. We don't just do the standard stuff every year. Last year, we used Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Fee and Lew money. This year, we're doing the same project, but we're using capital funds, and that's why it's in here. But what we found, it was, there's derelict fishing crab, crab traps and other fishing gear in the bottom of the waters just off of Baltimore County are great problems for fish. There are problems for crabs or problems for fish. Derelict means it's been lost by the fishermen or the watermen, right? So, there's no more, it's just sitting on the bottom of the bay, collecting, the crabs go in, but they can't get back out, and so they die. The fish go in, they can't get back out, so they die. So, that derelict gear is down there. We hired off-season, we partnered with Oyster Recovery Project, our partnership, and we hired off-season watermen. So, this is coming up for us in February and March. The higher Baltimore County off-season watermen to go out, and that's a side-scanning sonar that you see there, the green, to identify individual pieces of equipment that are left on the bottom. And so, these watermen go out, and they use hooks and lines, and they collect the crabs, the old crab traps and the old fishing gear and bring it up. So, it's a win for everybody. In this case, we were using fee and Lew money. We were hiring off-season watermen, and we're cleaning up the bay. It was such a great project, and it was so loved by everybody that was involved. Again, the county executive said, put it in the capital budget, we're going to do this for as long as we can. Next slide. So, yeah, this is the type of boat that they were using, and they would go out, and on the right side there is a dumpster showing the crab traps that they brought up. We invited news crews out to see this while they were out there doing it, and they were just supposed to come in the morning and take pictures and do interviews. Most of the news crews stayed the entire day, got on the boats, went out with them, did stories on the 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock news, and they were still there in the dark, reporting at the end of the evening because they thought it was such a great story. So, we identified many, many, I think we got 85% or 87% of the pieces of equipment that we identified last year. But we're going back in this year with capital funds, and we're going to do the same thing. So, we do other stuff besides just the usuals with your capital money, or with our capital. I think that concludes our presentation. More than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lichen, so much for the wonderful presentation, and I think my Chairman of the Planning Board Subcommittee is on. Scott, are you here?
I am here, sorry about that, I was having technical issues getting on.
That's okay, so I'm going to turn it over to you now, dear.
So, thank you. And so, as Mr. Lichen said, thank you very much for your presentation. If any board members have questions, raise your hands either on the WebEx or if you're on screen. Mr. Arey, do you have your hand up?
Yes. Mr. Lichen, thank you for your presentation. I have two questions for you. Now, your funding, does it come from the EPA, MDE, and the county? And then my second question is, how many citations for pollution do you issue each year? And does that bring any revenue to your department?
Sure, great questions, both of them. We, I'll answer the second one first. We're not a police force, and we do not have anybody that goes out and cites. We do cite individual polluters. Our usual method is not to find them. Our, we cite them in order to get the pollution corrected. So, if we find a company, for instance, that would be discharging something or a gas station that's leaking or something of that nature, our goal was to get it fixed. We're not interested in collecting money and fines. We're interested in getting it repaired and fixing the environmental damage that they may have done. In answer to your first question about source of funds, we have, we do apply to the state and the EPA, to the Chesapeake Bay Trust, to the DNR Trust, for grants every year. There's a large competition for that grant money. We usually get about somewhere between $2,000 and $5,000 in grant money every year. Other sources of funds that we use to do our projects, the main sources are metric politon district bonds, waterway improvement bonds, and left carryover money that we have from previous years.
So, to follow up, you did say, okay, you're not a police force, which I understand, you're not. Now, what, what, what if a company refuses to correct any action, any violation?
We're more than happy to take him to court. Last year, the county attorney asked for extra attorneys, and he has one specifically assigned to us, Lisa Smith, who's doing a great job. We try, we try our best to work with people, but at the end of the day, if they don't comply, we are not adverse to taking anyone to court.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Lichten? Yes, Ms. Wolfson.
Thank you. I'm very impressed about the derelict fishing gear. It's like hidden in plain view, you know? And I just would have never expected to be able to, there was that much stuff under there. That's very impressive. Also, the stream restoration, I know that one of your initial projects was on McDonough between Liberty and Brenbrook, and that's now probably 10 years old or better. And it is really beautiful to see how that project has matured over the years. Are all the, a couple of questions, are all the stream restorations and shoreline restorations on county property? And are all your plantings native species that are appropriate for their sites? So, you know, there's trees that don't grow well in full sun, you know, they need to be under a canopy at first. So, how do you determine what, what trees you're using for reforestation?
Well, we try to only use natives. I say that, but then in certain circumstances, there's always one or two that aren't for specific reasons. But 90, 95%, I will say, of our plantings are all native.
Great.
First question again?
If all the reforestation and shoreline restoration and stream restoration, are they all on public, I mean, county-owned property?
Certainly not. We have, we have used, we've had a program for, since probably 2010, of doing all these different things, the shoreline jobs, the waterway improvement stuff, even planting trees. We've done most of the county projects that we can. We have to do private, on a stream restoration job, we go up and down the stream, and we get permission from all the landowners that aren't county-owned. We try to stay within a county reservation or a easement, if we have one. But many times, we don't. But we do go to the property owners and get their permission to do these things. As far as planting trees goes, we plant trees everywhere. We'll go plant on anybody's property. And jobs, most of the shoreline jobs have been on county properties. We're working on a couple that are on private. We have one right now, a Bauer Farm job that was built, houses that were built down in, well, they're all in the critical area, but down on the east side, and we're working with the property owner to go ahead and put it in, do the job for them. Because anything that happens, whether I do it on public lands or private lands, we get credits for, towards our MS4 permit.
And so, on the private lands, this is done at no cost to the property owner?
Correct. Correct. And that's, it's an issue for us because we never charge anybody for it, right? Because we're doing it for the credit, and we're doing it to improve the environment in Baltimore County. Other agencies, state agencies, the State Highway Administration, private firms that do stream restoration, go to the same landowners that I do, and they knock on the same doors. My offer is, I will fix it for free for you. I'll be more than happy to design it, build it, fix the environment, make it much better, for free. Their offer usually, they're in it to make money, so Their offer usually, they're they're in it to make money. So sometimes they say, you know what, we'll give you a new driveway. We'll we'll build you a new barn. We'll give you $200,000. So I'm in competition with these private groups. It's more difficult.
And one more question. Are there any plans to do stream restoration on Ben's Run, which has its headwaters at Life Bridge Health in Randallstown on Old Court Road? It begins, the headwaters begin with concrete base from for several hundred feet. And I know I've been there. It's extremely eroded and there's a tremendous amount of impervious surface that contribute to that to that runoff into that stream.
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I will find out, let you know.
All right. Thank you so much. It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Lichten?
You can Photoshop me anytime.
Again, I want to thank you very much for your presentation and not seeing any other questions. I think we will now turn to our presentation from the Department of Information Technology. Mr. Michael Freed from the Office of Information Technology, I believe, will be giving the presentation for us.
Yes, sir. Just sharing.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Office of Information Technologies Capital Improvement Program. I also want to thank the members of the Office of Information Technology for their hard work in putting this together. I'm also realizing now that our presentation is severely lacking in the number of trees and views of streams. So you can rest assured that next year, that mistake will not be made again. My name is Mike Freedom, Acting Director of the Office, and really excited to talk you through. We started our presentation with this, just a a quick update around how we form these requests and how we make these decisions. So, you know, one of the unique things about Baltimore County is that it is a fully centralized technology model, meaning that our organization supports and empowers all of the agencies and offices across the county. And so the way that we make sure that we are working closely with our stakeholders is, one, always evolving, and two, to stay as close to the work as we possibly can. So we have things called CRMs, customer relationship managers, that we essentially embed close to the agencies, and then there is a whole process for them to work and set out essentially pipelines for that agency and the portfolio of work. Those go through internal discussions and then ultimately get prioritized, go before county leadership, and then find their way here. These are certainly, this is an iterative and ongoing process. I think the other theme that I would like to stress here for us this year is really on building a foundation of strength. And so you're going to hear me come back to that a few times in this presentation. We're going to go through a couple of our previously funded projects. Cybersecurity is kind of always the utmost on folks' minds. Here again, you know, our, I will talk about what we spent some of the money on a little bit, but for us, just conceptually, this is really ongoing as it is for anyone else. So cybersecurity is one of those things that unfortunately is never done, nor is it something that you ever want to brag about. So, you know, we, while we feel confident in our cyber posture, that is really a function not of exactly how ready we are today, but how much we pay attention to this and put this in the front of our minds and everything that we do. We're also working closely closely with our state partners as well as others. So some of the funds from this year were spent on some state mandated external assessments. But, you know, truthfully, we welcome those things because they just make us better. Again, this is unique in that because we have a consolidated environment, we have health information, we have criminal justice information. And so that allows us, the positive way to think about it, is that empowers us to really protect everything to a very, very high standard. Moving on to our ERP system, our Workday implementation, that's a project that's been going on for a while now and is, at the moment, we're working towards Phase Two, which is really focused on time and attendance and the payroll piece. We're pushing for towards a parallel payroll run in the first quarter. So you'll see some additional funding going into this. Here again, it's platforms to build on platforms from strength. So what you're running into with this project as with others is, you know, a lot of legacy processes that either happened on paper or happened in third party systems. And so bringing them over is more complicated than just a simple flicking a switch or migration. But sometimes it can really be rethinking it, again, at a specific agency level, making some trade offs for how things were. So we're really grateful for not just the OIT project team, but really the enterprise team that has come together to help support this. Lura, the Land Use Regulatory Automation Permits and Inspections. So this is essentially City Works at its core with some ancillary technologies around it. We've had the first rollout, which for asset management went pretty well, run into candidly some challenges on the licensing side, and we're reengaging those stakeholders. And I think we have a plan for some good progress there. Again, the way that I think about this project is just with the theme of building infrastructure upon which you can grow. And so the things that this will enable is instead of folks, you know, walking around now or previously to physically drop off checks, these become online and integrated systems. And so having these capabilities, having the Workday capabilities, all of a sudden, you actually can get an integrated enterprise, which is a really exciting future for the county. The broadband fiber program is one that we're certainly incredibly proud of here. The 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 Beacon Beacon program, and so it's a revenue generating program in that we're an internet service provider for others. We've got three hundred and ten connected sites that also has been working here with our state partners as well as private sector partners on updating our franchise agreements, which are required for cable operators, but also in securing grants to address digital disconnection and digital isolation of the county. So really working hard to partner where we can to close the digital divide. I'll get in some more details when we get to some of the, yeah, the actual numbers. Last one is our public health record system. Here again is a really, really exciting opportunity. We actually just had our pre bid conference today. And I was a little bit jumping off the walls because I'm a special kind of nerd. But what's really exciting about this isn't just the opportunity to modernize health infrastructure, which in and of itself is great. But it's going to make the county so much more resilient for future pandemics and future response. You're going to have much more integrated, for example, vaccine management, case management systems. And we're also using this again as an opportunity to not just put a system in place, but to think about it from a platform perspective. So reaching out to our state partners to talk about what does integrated case management look like? How can we really understand how residents and citizens that we serve go in and out of our clinics and our systems throughout the course of their life? So for the next few slides, I think just kind of picture beautiful vistas and trees popping out everywhere. But, you know, so this looks a little bit at the actual numbers against some of these projects that we've talked about. So again, cybersecurity, the bulk of those investments for us really have been laying some groundwork. So working with again on some of those state audits as well as getting some external service providers to help make sure that we are set up to be as resilient as possible. Our our Workday investments continue and you'll see some of that reflected. And, you know, we've talked through a few of these other ones as well. These are some more of the previously funded projects. These are in various states of completion or getting going. So, you know, we are with the Civic Rec program. We're really excited. We're in the middle of contract negotiations, but that's going to be a wonderful opportunity for parking wrecks to have a seamless portal for registration for participants across the entire county. So it's a great partnership. Our fleet management is being go live with the vendor right now, but we're in user training. We're closing out our enterprise asset management for highways. We've got my senior center for case management for the senior center. So, you know, as you can see, I think the way that OIT works is we've got a pretty broad scope, but what's exciting about these are the impacts we're able to have at the actual agency level. Moving on to a few others, again, these are ones that are, we've been working through in some of the trickier awards. So we're at the final stage of award for the National Fire Incident Reporting System, the jail management system. We took the same approach that we took with the health record, which is to engage a partner to help us drive a scope to make sure that when we're writing the scope, it's not just copying and pasting essentially what we have in place, but thinking through how we can mature our processes as part of this as well. The police helicopter video downlink, I'm realizing would have been a great opportunity for us to have like a video clip of some helicopters flying around. So again, we'll work on our presentation skills. But that is purchased and, you know, in the midst of the ongoing engineering work for that, as is the digital record conversion. And that's another one that I think is going to be an exciting area of growth in the future because as we really think not just about now, again, we have these platforms where we can digitize workflows going forward. But what do we do with all this paper and these legacy records that we have? And and how do we actually extend our capabilities to make those online and accessible, both to employees as well as to citizens? Talked about a few of these things, but this kind of sums up our twenty-four portfolio requests in the next two slides. So the big, you know, our Workday implementation of Phase Two, our continued investment in cybersecurity, our broadband fiber build out, we can, you know, we have lists of specific sites. What we do is we have a team that works with our partners, including the school system and public safety as well as community input to understand what are the sites that we can prioritize every year to bring on. Our eGov is really focused around, you know, open data and transparency initiatives and a variety of those. The public health record system, I probably have talked enough about with you. And then we've got some public safety records, projects, and, you know, the others that we've talked about a little bit. I want to keep going over them for you. The last piece gets to our summary. We've got, you know, our content management systems in our, some of our website transitions that we have to do. Exciting to put in some grants management software at the enterprise, which I actually think is going to be another opportunity for tracking and transparency, which we're very excited about. And then some library specific stuff, which is going to empower our citizens in really unique ways. So we partner with the library on things like digital equity, so stuff that seems like comprise replacement implementation, which seems like a very boring bullet point, actually is making the public computers that library users use more secure and more flexible and more accessible. So, you know, through these kind of, again, infrastructure investments, we're hopefully opening it up for our citizens to have a much better experience and 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 much more holistically, as well as the multilingual kiosks. And with that, conclude my presentation. Again, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to talk about this and we welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freed. Again, I see at least one hand. So, Mr. Ari?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. Thank you. Two questions. Do you are you, I'm here.
Mr. Ari, do you have two devices open because there's a lot of feedback?
Quiet now, Mr. Ari.
There you go.
All right. So, thank you for your presentation. Wonderful presentation from you in your office. Do you, do you coordinate with any state stakeholders such as MDA, Network Maryland in areas of fiber optics and network connectivity?
Sure. So I would, I'll start with like the general answer, then we get specific. The general answer is we coordinate very closely with our state partners. Again, the level of participation, I think, a little bit depends on what area we're talking about. So again, like health and human services, you know, some of our human services work is actually funded directly by the state. And so we have like state employees sitting here on our network. And so there's a very tight collaboration there. And again, we're really excited about working more with the new state administration to even expand that relationship around data sharing and those things. I think similar with the school system. We've got interconnections on the network side that our technical team can certainly speak to, and we can follow up and get you some more details around that. But I I would say that we have very tight communication with our state partners and on public safety as well. I mean, certainly, again, because we're hosting the public safety environment.
Right. Okay. So my other question is, in terms of all these systems, I know you have multiple systems. Are they running on cloud, some of them, or just you are just being developed and maintained by the county?
Sure. Yeah. The so the answer is a little bit of everything is what I would say. We've got a, there's been a push here over the last few years to really work on having applications that are hosted by vendors where appropriate and where possible. And, you know, I'd say that where appropriate includes not just checking the box, but really doing a rigorous assessment of our vendor's capability to make sure that it's sitting in the right place. There are certainly, you know, with such diverse portfolio, there's several applications that we are hosting ourselves and looking at what are the opportunities? And then we also have a cloud services group for those applications that are hosted either in Amazon or an Azure environment. So for us, it's a little bit of a mix depending on what the right and appropriate environments.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have one last question. This, now, you did mention fiber optics revenue. Is it, do you have like revenue generation for fiber optics providers? Telecom providers for the state? In other words, do you allow them to build fiber and to compensate the state or the county for use of the right of way?
Sure. So let me maybe answer with a few more words and see if I make sure I answer your questions, sir. We both have franchise agreements with, you know, with with Comcast and and the other ISPs and in some process through which they operate and there's fees and expectations associated with those. And then we are also essentially a network service provider, although I really want to be careful with that language and what it means. You know, we're not offering direct internet service to county residents, but to other agencies in some places and external partners. We are essentially leasing parts of our network or some of that physical infrastructure, which is revenue generating.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Freed?
Yeah, this, this.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Todd will come to you next.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. It wasn't boring at all. Going to transparency, you know, two, two programs that the county offers are Citizen Access and My Neighborhood. Citizen Access, you can record, you know, report code violation or code enforcement violations and building permit, building violations. Code enforcement's pretty good. You can usually find all the documents that have been submitted. But for the building violations, I know we have a situation here over in District Four that's been going on for almost a year now, where we're told we have to go to Towson if we want to see any of the documents. Are there any plans to bring building permits into that fold so that, you know, people all over the county don't have to drive to Towson to physically look to follow that tray, that paper trail? And it's it's clunky to use. It looks outdated. So are there any plans to update that? Bring building in permits into that user model? And My Neighborhood, which is an incredible tool. So are there any plans to add a tutorial, more user friendly tutorial to that program so that you don't have to have a PhD in computer technology in order to use it?
Well, I'm a little torn because as a nerd, I'd like everybody to get PhDs in computer technology, but I'm, I'm sorry. No, I I think I love this feedback so much, and I think it goes to a couple of things. So let me, let me. let me, let me, let me answer your question specifically and then talk a little bit about how I'm excited about. You know, answering your question specifically, yes, that absolutely is our intent is that these will become online and accessible in that way. We are, that is the project in process now. So again, with the Lura system, we're looking at bringing those workflows in and we're spending a little extra time now making sure that it is a user-friendly and modern experience. So that I would ask you to hold us to that because that is certainly our expectation of how this project will go. In terms of the training piece around My Neighborhood, I think the, the short answer is yes, that's something we can do. I think also honestly, philosophically, that's something we should really be embracing is having more community-focused sessions around what tools are available. As we make more tools online and more things available, I want to make sure that we're working with our partners at the libraries and other places to, to help folks and empower folks. I mean, these tools are only as good as they work for you as a resident. So that is certainly going to be our priority. And I think something we literally should build into our and we will specifically set one up for many different.
All right. I use it all the time. I'll be watching. Thank you.
Todd, do you still have a question?
Yeah, my question's more around security and how are we securing all these networks and, you know, Baltimore City had a, you know, basically shut down every system they had. You know, and the government almost shut down, down there for a while. So what are we doing to prevent that from happening? And is that part of, you know, any of the plans you have?
Yes, sir. So I was actually, I was with the city in responsible for health, human services technology during the incident. So have some firsthand experience there. Again, it, it's, it is a layered and complex issue. Is the short answer. I think a bit longer answer is that we are investing heavily in our cybersecurity posture, both on the prevention side as well as the recovery side. And so specifically, when you look at these types of incidents, it is really, really important that we invest in both. And so, you know, on the one hand, we have to be forever diligent because there are constant streams of folks trying to get into our network and get access to the various data and systems that we have. On the other side of it, you know, we have to know that we will, you know, there will be incidents of varying degrees and hopefully not catastrophic. But there will be those challenges. And so we have to equally invest in not just the cyber preparedness, but also the operational preparedness. So that's everything from working with our emergency preparedness colleagues to say, how can we keep operations going when portions of the infrastructure go offline for a while? That's a function of resiliency. And then we also need to be able to say, how can we make sure that we get our systems back up and running? So just disaster recovery. Do we have good enough backups? Are we testing them? Are we doing our diligence on that side? So you know, it's, we can go into a lot of the kind of details of the places that we're investing, but philosophically, it's in those three general areas. The first is really being, making sure we are as secure as possible. And then making sure we're as resilient as possible and working with our partners to make sure that just because there are incidents or parts of the network go down, that we can continue operations. I, I hope that addresses your questions, sir.
That was great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Freed? I am not seeing any. So once again, I echo everyone else's comments. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's fascinating to hear what you guys are having to, to, to work up against. And it's interesting to see how the counties on, you know, web presence is expanding. So look forward to seeing what's, what's been done by next year. We now have one last presentation for tonight. It's our own Department of Planning. I want to invite Ms. Megan Benjamin and Director Steve Lafferty to begin their presentation.
Megan, do you want to go ahead and start? You're on mute. You're on mute, Megan.
Sorry, I lost my audio. All right. Good, good evening, everyone. Let me share the presentation. All right. Can you see that? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Benjamin. I am the Land Preservation Administrator here in the Department of Planning. And I'm looking forward to presenting to you this evening on our capital funds in the land preservation program and our needs moving forward towards our land preservation goals. With the capital funds for land preservation, we are working towards our current master plan goal of protecting at least 80,000 acres. We work towards this goal through a number of programs, some very importantly funded through the county, county capital program. I underline at least here because this is our base level goal that was determined in the 1990s with the input from the University of Maryland Extension based on an evaluation of the critical land, critical mass and land needed in order to protect and support the agricultural industry. And it was included as such in our current master plan. According to state law for ag preservation priority areas, counties should be ultimately be working towards protecting at least 80% of the undeveloped lands in our priority preservation area. So that puts us beyond 80,000. So it's important to us here for, since we are a certified county and as such are able to retain a higher percentage of ag transfer tax as we work towards these goals. Exciting news, as of the end of last year, we were at 69,940 acres. And as of last week, we actually achieved the nice round number of 70,000 acres permanently protected. We actually worked with the Office of Communications and putting together a video highlighting that that achievement. And we were hoping to share it with you, but we weren't sure if the audio would work, but I think the video link will appear in your chat and you can take a look at that later if you haven't seen it yet. Last year was a banner year for us. We were able to protect 1,625 acres through 21 easements, which was a 10-year high in the number of acres as well as projects. So it really highlights that the increase in funding for our land preservation programs has increased the pace of preservation, which is critical as we are always racing against the rate of conversion of our farmlands. And we currently have 19 farms in our pipeline to protect an additional 1,200 acres through the programs we administer. This next slide, the chart is showing the proportion of acres that are protected through the different programs. MOUTH, which is our state ag program, has about 40% of our acres protected there. So a very important program in the county. MET and a local land trust primarily donated easements make up a, and also in a large proportion of just under 30%. Rural Legacy, both county and state easements in this category make up just under 20%. Our county ag program makes up just under 10%. And then our RC four and RC six regulatory easements make up a little less than a percent. The photos you see on this page, and I like to point out that my presentation is full of beautiful photos. But the, the photos you see here are representing signs from some of the programs that make up the proportion of these programs, Maryland Environmental Trusts, there are a lot of those out on the landscape. The bottom left is a mouth preserved farm sign. And then on the right-hand side is our county protected land protection sign that was just unveiled this year. It's we worked with the county executive's office in the design and rollout of that. Our landowners that have received it have been very pleased with it. And we hope that you'll be seeing more of those out on the landscape as well. The, our goal is that these will provide, excuse me, people will take notice and build awareness of these things. And this, the graph is just illustrative of, so you can see the various programs that are helping towards our goals and the overall variety of options that are available to our landowners as well. This is our capital improvement program funds. We have a lot of fantastic properties that we are working with. This chart highlights some of the different programs and progress we've made this year. Spending categories include the map, the county, sorry, the state ag program mouth, the, our county ag preservation program and county rural legacy program, all of which receive capital funds. Of the 1,625 acres that we protected last year, we had county funds going towards 12 mouth easements on over 1,000 acres. One county ag easement of about 70 acres and four county rural legacy easements of 248 acres. And this, if I just had one slide in the presentation, this pretty much sums up the, the work that we are doing. This is showing, highlighting some of the projects from last year and all of the different programs. The top left slide is Carmel View Farm, 135 acre farm protected through the county rural legacy program in the Piney Run area. This builds on a, an over 20,000 acre block of protected lands in that area. The top middle slide shows a photo of the property that came in in our county ag program. And while this doesn't look like your typical ag cropland, forestry is also considered counted as agriculture as well. And so that is, is that property. The top right photo is a, our largest farm that came in last year, a 221 acre farm in the Long Green area. And then all three photos on the bottom are also in the mouth program. The center photo on the bottom was an interesting one because the there had been a stream restoration project on this farm. And so while the ease, the mouth easement covers the entire 51 acres of the property as one, we only had to pay for a portion of the property because the area that was previously restored along the stream was already counted as protected. But this easement made it more cohesive and shows how the different programs can really work together with any given property. So again, this just highlights the variety of farms, the size, the type and the area of properties that we've worked with this past year.
Hey Megan, real quick.
Yes.
Can you make your screen full, full screen? If you go into view, you can click full screen mode. I'm sorry, view on the top left-hand corner.
Yeah.
And then just full screen mode. We just had a request from someone.
Okay, sorry about that.
All good. Thank you.
Sure. So moving on to our needs moving forward. Our mouth program is always a priority and contributing funds towards this because the state will match the county funds at a 60-40 ratio up to $2 million dollars of their matching funds. We are putting additional funds. Did I lose my, is that not sharing anymore?
It's not. I'm passing it back to you. I don't know how it got switched. You should be able to share now. There we go.
So so we have two billion in this category for mouth, which is beyond what they will match. But putting more funds in this category, the easements that are created are state easements. And so that comes with efficiencies, both on the processing side as well as the long-term legal stewardship obligations of those. So we think that's a good investment towards those properties. Our county ag program, through this program, we have nine projects and 454 acres in the pipeline. And we want to continue our momentum and keep this program an active option for landowners. For our county rural legacy easements, we've been very successful in working with our local rural legacy sponsors to get projects moving in this program. We have three projects on over 200 acres in the pipeline for this program. And again, we want to continue our momentum here and keep this program active as well. And just pointing out that dollars spent in our rural legacy area also help to draw additional state dollars to the county through the state rural legacy program as well. And then we also want to continue supporting the Baltimore County Land Trust Alliance, which is an umbrella group created by the county and the land trusts to bring efficiencies and coordinate their activities. Their work very much in support of our goals, both through outreach and with their work with state side rural legacy grants. We find that this relatively small investment pays back in the services provided and the additional state dollars that are drawn because of their work. As far as our work and how it contributes to resiliency and sustainability, we contribute towards these things in multiple ways. Our ag programs include requirements for soil conservation and water quality plans to help ensure that farming practices protect soil and water quality and boost sustainability, sorry, boost sustainability and resiliency. And then a rural legacy easement as well have required, have required enhancements of stream buffers and look to protect our forest canopies as well. So these are multiple other ways that our easements help maintain, improve, improve resource functions. This, just a quick graphic to highlight, again, multiple sustainability functions that land preservation helps to provide focusing infrastructure inside the urdle in order to preserve our priority areas outside. Maintaining land for local food production, protecting large blocks of forest for carbon storage and protection of our waters for drinking and recreation. And we were asked to provide an equity review for the funds we're using. The programs that these projects are administered, administered through focus on agriculture and rural land preservation, which are focused in areas primarily outside of those identified with vulnerable populations. However, the benefits of land preservation impact all members of the community, including underserved and vulnerable populations through the benefits of clean air and water and maintaining viable agricultural lands for local food. And all the other very important public benefits which land preservation provides. So thank you for your attention and support and any questions you may have.
Steve, do we want to raise questions now or are you also giving a presentation and wait till after?
I'll be doing one, but it'll be on a separate set of issues of, of Mr. Chairman. So I think questions for Megan would be appropriate now.
Okay, Mr. Hekman, I see your hand raised.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a question about, I think we've talked about this before. The land, the rate of land preservation per year seems to be around 1,000 to maybe 1,500 acres, I think, last year. And at that rate, it's still going to take us nine, 10 years to get to our goal. So is, if we wanted to speed that up, is it a function of allocating more to the budget or is the rate just the rate because, you know, we're having a hard time finding dance partners, so to speak?
So the, so last year, you know, we did increase the rate based, you know, from previous years. It is a function, being successful in our goals is a function both of funding and willing partners. And we always want to have quality acres. So I think the pace that we are working So I think the pace that we are working at now is sustainable and is allowing us to bring in quality acres towards our goals. So I think the pace we are going is, is good. I think the budget that we have outlined is balanced towards, towards those things that I'm saying. Quality acres, bringing in those that are interested, that meet our requirements and going at a rate that makes sense for bringing in quality acres.
Yeah, that makes sense, but I was just wondering if we increased the budget so that we could allocate more per acre, would that make it more attractive for people to, you know, put their land in the preservation?
So we are, so depending on the program is how you determine the value of the easement. And there has to be some basis in the market for what the value is. So for example, in the mouth program, they will pay no more than seventy-five percent of the fair market value. And so we are paying fair easement prices for the easements that we are bringing in. And I will also say outreach is a big part of our program. And we do not have a long list of properties waiting. So we want to keep pace with bringing, you know, doing the outreach to bring in those quality acres. So I don't think it's, we want to, the budget we have laid out is in my, my take, a sensible approach to bringing in those acres. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Brophy?
Thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Benjamin. Um, just a quick question. You had mentioned earlier that we are a certified county for land preservation and there are certain benefits to that. What specifically are those benefits? And you kind of mentioned the outreach program. How do you, how do you get that information out to landowners?
Sure. So state certification, the big benefit of that, along with the just verification that our goals are working towards the preservation of important lands to protect the ag economy. The, the big carrot to that is that when you are a certified county, the ag transfer taxes that the county collects, we are able to retain seventy-five percent of the ag transfer tax for use in our programs versus counties that are not certified only retain thirty-three percent. So it's retaining those funds to be able to put towards our land preservation programs and goals. That's the huge benefit of being certified. Retaining those locally. And then as far as outreach goes, your question is how do we do outreach or?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so we, multiple ways. So we advertise our application deadlines, various ways in newspapers that hit some of the rural areas. We have five land trusts that are at work throughout different areas of the county. And I mentioned the Baltimore County Land Trust Alliance. So we work with the land trust individually as well as the land trust alliance to host, typically annually will host like a meeting for land and invite landowners to come to attend, to learn not only about our programs, but all of the other programs that are available to landowners. We do targeted mailings to people. Oftentimes, I mentioned our signs that are, we're getting out. Oftentimes, a lot of the outreach is done landowner to landowner. So maintaining good relationships with the landowners that we have and working with them to talk to others they might know. And then we have our agricultural land preservation advisory board. We work with them to connect with landowners as well.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Warren, do you have a question for Ms. Benjamin or is that just from before?
No, I actually have several questions and, and may not be able to answer these all on the phone. You may need to get the information and I understand that. But do you know the percentage of these agriculturally preserved lands that are actually farmed? And then farmed by actual farmers on that land and they're not just rented out to big national farms or, or regional farmers? Uh, that would be the first question. The second question I would have is around how we're going to obtain or meet our obligations around affordable housing. If we are, if two-thirds of the land in our county is, is outside the urdle and, and we're continuing to preserve all this land. The agreement we have with the federal government is that a thousand homes would be built in the north county area. So I don't know that you can answer that, but what's the plan around, around that? And the last one was that Mr. Lippenholtz, who was very active on the planning board, had came to the planning board before his retirement and presented a plan around agro tourism. And I just wonder where we're at with utilizing agro tourism so the community can actually enjoy or be part of this land that we're paying to have preserved. Those would be the three questions I have for you.
Okay, so for your first question about the percentage of the properties that are actually farmed and who farms them, I don't have that information off the top of my head. I will say that's not something we typically track in a formal way on our easement properties. The purpose of the easement, it's not requiring people to farm the property, but it is guaranteeing that that land is available to be farmed either now or in the future. A lot of, some data that you might be interested in seeing there would come out in our ag, in the ag census, which is in the, in process now. So we'll have fresh data on what's happening in the county as far as ag is concerned in the next year or so when they get that data out. As far as meeting our obligations for affordable housing, that is beyond something I'd be able to answer right now. And then the value-added agricultural report that you mentioned that, that is something that we're still looking at. Of course, there's, there's definitely ag tourism happening out on the landscape now. There are things that are, that were recommended in that report that are being taken up and still need to be taken up in that regard. So it's still a very live and active report that we do look to and will be looking to, to work further on as well.
Thank you. If somebody else could answer the second question or be helpful, and I don't expect to an answer today, but I mean, if somebody could report back on that.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else?
Yes, thank you. I just want to applaud the land preservations group for protecting the three essentials for all of our lives, whether we're inside or outside the urdle, and that is food, water and air. Thank you for that. It's wonderful to see the inclusion of forest in that effort. And I think we have to have a mindset now that conservation is progress. So this program goes a long way towards that and it's something I, I personally, for my district, we wholeheartedly support.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions for Ms. Benjamin? Mr. Ari, did you raise your hand? Uh, we're not hearing you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to take this minute to thank the entire Department of Planning and Steve and your team for a great job. Very tough, under tough difficulties, you guys always excel. And Taylor and the rest of the team, we really appreciate what you guys do to keep us afloat and to keep the county going. Thank you.
Any other comments? Wayne, is that, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I, I, I'm going to get some makeups, I think I better not.
You are, you're being very echoey. I think you might have two.
Yes. That's all right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. Locally grown food and fiber and protection of environment are always going to be a net asset for the public. So I just wanted to just add that in.
Thank you. Any other final comments, thoughts? If not, we will turn it over to Director LaFerty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also do want to echo some of the comments about Megan and her team's work. We're very proud to have them as an active and integral part of the Department of Planning. And as you can see, they work very hard to try and build up that sort of book of business, as you will. It is a challenge to get people to engage. And I really appreciate Mr. Heckman's questions about sort of how do we sort of step up that. But believe me, they're working very hard. Number of, I have three contracts. I'll be going to the county council in February based upon the work they did, adding two more easements and actually in feed property. So one of them is on the coastal area over on the east side, which has been a tougher area to sort of get into. So my presentation tonight is a little different, a little different focus. And this is much more on the built environment. Our capital budget really is a little different entity than what you've seen with some of the other agencies. You know, we have a, have a mission that's really built around a number of different policies and programs. And it's really to direct and manage the growth and to, of the county as well as to support both communities and the, and the economic climate to make sure that we have healthy, vibrant areas in which to live, work and play. And do that in an equitable way that also is sustainable. And we look towards the master plan, the county's enterprise strategic plan, sustainable community plans. And we have nine of those underway, currently underway are revisions to the Essex and Catonsville plans, for instance. And three more will be undertaken because the state requires those updates every five years as well, as well as the commercial revitalization districts. And we really are, capital budget is baited, broken into two pieces. One is the Dundalk Center Place Road Extension. This was initiated actually as a heritage trail and has, has changed over time. These funds will allow a connection from the, from historic Dundalk to the city and really try to provide an opening for people to have greater access and encourage not only pedestrian but bicycle activity in this part of downtown, quote, downtown Dundalk, which the subcommittee chair knows well. And then there's also our countywide improvements, which look at a whole range of challenges and issues that confront the neighborhoods and business districts and quarters throughout the county. It really, they're intended to enhance the quality of life, but also to look at, in many respects, smaller projects that could be undertaken that really either build community stability or community engagement. And so as I said, we're broken really into just two elements. One, the Dundalk Center Place Roadway Extension and then our countywide improvements based upon the voters' approval of the capital budget referendum in the last election. We will have four million dollars available to us in FY twenty-four and each of the, hopefully subsequently in the other years as well. As Director Lykens indicated earlier, we also have funds currently existing that have not yet been spent or have not been fully programmed. And those are some of the dollars that we rely upon to move projects forward. I wanted to also share with you some of the ongoing projects that we have and discuss them in a little more detail in a moment. But they range from rehabilitation and renovation of the Pikeville Armory to Security Square Mall and working with the East House in neighborhood to refurbish an important historic property in their community as well as working in various communities throughout the county. We have a number of items that have also been added to our budget that we administer. We're very fortunate to have Amy Mensor as our, basically as our lead project manager on many of these projects. It's not only to provide support for other entities that exist in the county, but as you can see, we have a couple that we are also supporting as part of our regional commitment to helping the city with the BMA and Hippodrome, for instance. So let me start with maybe the largest, which is the Security Square Mall project. Between the county and the state, we have committed twenty million dollars to date for the total reimagining of Security Square Mall. This is a ninety acre parcel just immediately south of Security Boulevard and west of the Beltway that has multiple owners and over the last couple of decades has really deteriorated in quality and, and its presence as an asset of the community. The county executive made a commitment and worked with Speaker Adrian Jones to obtain funds to invest in this property. We were able to acquire the former Sears building and its eighteen acres as well as then to invest in a charrette process that was a full engagement of the community as well as using the expertise of two design firms here in the city, Air St. Gross and JMT, to develop a, a set of plans for what this future may be and turn what is a detriment into an asset. The top picture is just a quick image of the charrette process itself. The bottom image on the right gives some concept or at least one of the concepts of what may be able to be redone on the site in order to capture a true mixed use. Maybe town center or at least, at least a way to reimagine the way the entire facility can be used. And as you see on the left, the vast parking around the Sears building creates a lot of opportunities that we're pursuing. In Essex, the county executive is committed to a new Essex initiative, which is also provided over three million dollars for a range of projects. This will include a focus on Eastern Boulevard and down back Riverneck Road and include how we can refurbish not only the main street of Eastern Boulevard, but also other acquisition opportunities or ways of building a facade improvement program or strengthening the housing. We're very pleased to be part of this. It's a very, it's a full court press, if you will, by the county executive to really try to tackle the underlying violence and crime issues that have challenged this Essex area. In Parkville, we have invested in the Baltimore Association Nepalese and Americas Building, which has become a community gathering place for the Nepalese community, which is a growing population in the county, not just in Parkville, but, but around. Parkville community is represented by delegate Perry Vandari, for instance, the first Nepalese American elected in the local legislature in, in the country. In East Towson, the pride of Towson Lodge is an older building that has become really a gathering place for the community. What's not shown in this image is they have an area in the back of the property where they held, held their Juneteenth celebration. They've held a jazz concert. It's a place where the community comes together. And so the county, county executive committed money to the community for And so the county, uh, county executive committed money to the community for improvements. Uh, the neighborhood association, uh, chose to focus its attention on this building in order to enhance it. You can see they've already installed some new windows. They've done some painting. Uh, they have a lot more work to do. Uh, but again, they're making some serious progress to, to really make this even a better place for the community to gather. In Pikeville, we've already invested money to install new benches and are now working with a committee of, uh, residents and business owners to find additional ways to direct resources that the county has already committed, uh, to supporting the downtown of Pikeville. One of the challenges here, just like in Essex, is the fact that we're on a state highway. And whenever we're working on a state highway, quite candidly, it's, it's very, very challenging to get the state highway administration to be a partner. We're almost adversarial at times. So it does slow down our progress, but doesn't stop our intent nor doesn't stop communities engagement and finding ways to make communities like Pikeville and Essex even stronger than what they are. One of the elements in Pikeville is Pikeville Armory. This is sort of a, in, in, a unique scenario because this property is still owned by the Military Department of the State. Um, they have agreed to help transfer it. Uh, however, the county has made it clear, we do not want to own the property, but we will be the bit, as you were, the conduit, uh, to transfer to a new foundation that's been created, a new nonprofit called the Pikeville Area, um, Armory Foundation. Um, and this is fourteen acres of land in the heart of, of Pikeville. Uh, in the bottom left, you'll see a memorial to those who, uh, National Guards, uh, men who have fallen in battle in World War Two. Um, it is a, it's historic. This building was built, uh, before World War One. It housed cavalry units, uh, for World War One. Uh, they've gone through a number of community processes to engage the community, as you can see in the middle, uh, the top, uh, to get ideas. Uh, and the, we are working very hard with the foundation to have this property transferred from the state to the foundation so that they can begin the total refurbishment. Uh, in the upper left is the Armory Building itself, which is a million square feet. Uh, and not in the best of condition is probably an understatement. Uh, in the bottom right, uh, corner, it does show the, the existing NCO Club, uh, which is actively used building by, uh, the non-commissioned officers. Uh, they, we are talking to them about having recreation and parks occupy part of the building. Uh, but on the front edge, which again is the image shown here, is to create a, an actual armory park, create a park where the community can gather and hold events and celebrate. Hopefully we will be getting to the state and getting an agreement so we can effectuate this transfer. Uh, and the county has put, uh, uh, over two million dollars in the past couple of years. I anticipate we will continue to support this matching state funds. On Liberty Road, uh, there are a number of initiatives that have begun. A couple of years ago, uh, the planning board did approve a set of, uh, design guidelines to help look at what may be done to, uh, particularly to refocus on some of the older shopping centers. Uh, we are currently working with the community. Working with the community. Community as well to, uh, create a community development organization that can help us as on-the-ground partners and serve the rehabilitation. Uh, there is a major project underway at the intersection of Milford Mill and Liberty Road where we will see a new grocery store be built. Uh, the county has invested in, in bringing that to be as well, uh, to serve the under, an underserved community. Uh, also in Randallstown, but further to the west is funding for Impact Baltimore Economic Development Corporation to create a, a community gathering place and childcare facility, uh, so that again, in this part of the, uh, Liberty Road corridor, there will be more services to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, those are just a few of the projects that we've undertaken. Uh, we have many more. Uh, we are working actively to develop a facade improvement program that can be made available, uh, which would build upon, uh, the Architect on Call program that we already have in place. Uh, and we're also developing, uh, hopefully a strategy for providing more resources to smaller organizations uh, that need support. We believe that we've listened to the community's voices and been able to bring those to bear in the funding that's now been made available. Uh, I, I will say that, as, as I indicated earlier, we function differently. We don't, we don't do the projects the same way that economic, excuse me, that environmental protection does or property management. Um, we generally are a grant providing organization or entity uh, with capital funds going out to nonprofits. Uh, there are, you know, like on Liberty Road where we've provided trash cans and live, um, Rice's, excuse me, Pikeville where we've provided some benches, having hands-on engagement. But it's in a little, really in a different kind of vein. We have to rely upon other agencies and partners to, to deliver these projects. And I show you this, uh, not because we have a current investment in Reisterstown, but to show as we work with this Main Street community, uh, the kind of projects that we could envision uh, in other communities as well. Uh, we are a partner and provide funding to Reisterstown Improvement Association so they can, uh, manage their Main Street program. Uh, but we, we recognize that with a little bit of investment, we can see such dramatic changes in communities throughout the county. Um, so with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop. I can probably try to answer a couple of Mr. Warren's questions, but I'll take other questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. LaFerty. Oh. Are there any questions on the, this presentation?
I have my hand raised, so.
Uh, that is, no, that's okay. Uh, Mr. Warren?
I just want to thank you for your efforts around social security. Uh, it's an important part of our community and it has been, uh, on the decline and uh, it is important to everyone here in our community. So your efforts there are greatly appreciated. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolfson?
I just, I just want to say how much I agree with Todd on that point. And, and the focus also on Liberty Road and, and Woodlawn as well.
Other questions, comments? I've hired everyone out.
Mr. Luke, if I may, uh, let me, I know, uh, Mr. Warren asked earlier, asked, uh, Ms. Benjamin about the, uh, portable housing and the urdle issue. This is a challenge. The, we are, we are not looking to move the urdle line. Um, and we recognize that we now need to take a, a very different look at the existing areas and how do we retrofit, uh, in communities that, uh, need to have, you know, I think all of us have seen in one place or another uh, shopping centers that no longer are really servicing the community. Uh, as retail changes and the economic landscape changes, um, we have to rethink how properties are being used. Uh, and so it's going to be important in the future for the county to look into those areas where we can think about refurbishing, retrofitting, redevelop, call it what you want. And I think the analysis that will be presented in the master plan will, will also sort of reaffirm that we need to move in a little different direction, uh, in order to accommodate either affordable housing or also just the, the future economy that, that the county will be, uh, will be seeing. So.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I'm not seeing any hands. Um, then thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Thank you, Mr. LaFerty, for your presentations tonight and for the other, uh, county officials who spoke earlier. If there are no further questions, I am going to move to adjourn. I want to thank everyone. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget will be next Thursday, February second at five thirty PM. That meeting will be held in person. Uh, information on that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. Thank everyone for attending and we'll see you next Thursday.
Thank you.